All right. Welcome, everyone. We're going to start the common council meeting for June 3rd. Um, I'll be stepping in for the mayor as he is going to try to hit home plate today with the first pitch. Um, so good luck with that. Um, let's have the roll call, please.
Sure, Councilmember Moshe Campoli.
Yeah.
Councilmember Walsh Russo is excused. Councilmember McHugh.
Here.
Councilmember Lapari Shu. Uh, Councilmember Carson is excused. Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart.
Here.
Councilmember Mattson.
Here.
And I believe that's a quorum, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's, uh, if everybody will rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That is where we are all who are standing. One nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
All right. We're gonna, Councilmember, uh, Moshe Campoli, we're gonna do one thing real quick, cause Cory's gotta kinda run out of here real quick. So we're gonna have him do his presentation, then we'll come back and do the council member discussion, okay? So Cory.
Do I stand over there?
Yeah, wherever you feel comfortable.
Okay, uh, my name's Cory Rowe from On Segomedia.
We need you to have some microphone set, you can be heard on the.
Oh, yes, yes, I forgot we're recording, I'm sorry.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name's Cory Rowe from On Segomedia. Um, I'm here tonight to give a report on marketing efforts. Uh, Segomedia has been selected by the City of Oneonta to enhance its existing marketing efforts with focus on further developing website, exploreoneonta.com, a lot of other things. Um, methods for improving the website traffic includes videos in place of title cards, uh, event, event calendar with a submission form and enhanced SEO. We are also tasked with changing the narrative that there's nothing to do by showing all the events that are happening and will happen within two weeks window once a week. So we've started to do these kind of weekly videos where we highlight what happened in the past week and tell people what's going on in the next week so they can be aware of it, go to those events. Uh, and we, we tie that in with the event calendar, uh, which has, which has been successful. Uh, we're also on call of the city to make videos on specific topics such as the new Caspi bus route, maybe also live stream events as we do, and answer messages from local businesses. Another item that we're working on is the creation of a trifold brochure with maps. Hope from Kate Al, her husband Joe are currently working on this, and I should have more of a report coming up, this is in process. I know there are some other maps that are out there, so if it's deemed that there's a better map, then I'm always ready to hear it, but for right now, we're trying to highlight Caspi to downtown and then Cooperstown to Oneonta, basically, so that we can highlight local businesses downtown as well as major hotspots. Um, I'd also like to note that all funds will be spent locally. We hired two college students on top of our regular team. These students will help us transition our focus from summer events to college-centric activities when students return, as was part of the RFP that we belong to. So far, what's working, the videos are having the largest impact by making people aware of events and seeing themselves in those events. Our weekly recap videos typically draw around 7,000 views per video on average with 300 through clicks that take us directly to the event calendar. And we're utilizing collaboration between social media accounts so that people who are into videos get tagged in the videos and they share the videos, kind of, basically, uh, by definition, it's a grassroots movement is what we're trying to do. Um, we are receiving overly positive comments on these videos, even for business owners who traditionally have a negative outlook, have responded positively showing everything that we're doing. And we tied this in with some giveaways, we've given away a $20 gift card to people who engage with the videos, engage with social media, and all that's being paid out of. And those, those gift cards are being purchased from businesses. Several businesses have offered donations and we've denied them because we don't wanna collect free stuff from our businesses, we wanna give money to our businesses, which is what our hope is, even though it's as little as $20. Um, the event calendar and submission form on exploreoneonta.com is working well. We have received requests from people who are aware of it now to put their event on the calendar, and working with members of the city government, we're consistently updating that. June and July right now are chock full of events on exploreoneonta.com, so you can just go to the website, click on events, and see literally multitude of events that are happening in and around the city of Oneonta every single day. Uh, website traffic is up an astronomical amount percentage-wise, uh, with over 1,600 visitors in the month of May, up from only 31 visitors in April, which is roughly a 4,500 percent increase. Uh, that I'm sure will dip after we get going, but you'll at least start to see some, some nice responses there. Uh, things that are not working so well is getting people to utilize the hashtag #ExploreOneonta. We're trying to get people to use that hashtag, we're promoting and using that hashtag, and we believe that it will work, it's just gonna take a little bit more time so that people are aware of what we're trying to do. We've only had three videos come out so far for a weekly recap, so we expect that to go over time. Um, it's not really able to work, but it'll need more time to build the public's perception of this. Clearly, we need new faces, like we did in last week's video with Ben Kennedy receiving her first gift card. Another area we need to work on is how to engage with people who are not on social media. This is our largest challenge, as radio and print are less effective and costly, and we are left with little options to garner their engagement. We are working with city officials to put some signage on buses, uh, we're gonna put in placement ads, anything that we can to spread the word through non-social media avenues so that people are aware of what's going on, uh, and then they can interact with it as well. But overall, we're feeling the initial signs of success, a successful campaign, and only require more time to have devices we've created do their job. If you have any questions or comments, just let me know. And that's basically my report at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Concerns?
Cory, one question, have you tracked and geolocated where those things are coming from?
Absolutely. So every, every time we put out a weekly recap video, we geo-fence, uh, City of Oneonta, Cooperstown, and we're going after Sydney right now, because a lot of people from Sydney come here to do different events and things of that nature. So we are geo-tagging locations on the videos, we're sending out the videos. And when we put out our SEO videos, we made our first one, what to do in Oneonta on a rainy day, cause it's something that people Google a lot here. And so, we made a video, that's an SEO sub-video, and then we will release that, promote it, and geo-fence Caspi and All-Star Village in Cooperstown, so that the families, when they're visiting, will be hit with these videos when they scroll through Facebook.
That's cool.
Yes.
Um, I was curious, I heard you talking about maps and stuff, um, so are we, is there incorporation with this campaign, um, with talking about like the parking that's available downtown, or the detours and things like that, cause I know that's something we're talking about.
We're not as much working on the detours as, we're trying to highlight, we're trying to just show the best of the best.
Yeah, yeah, I think that idea that, like, I, I think what I'm talking about is that positive messaging, right, about downtown, you know, getting folks down there. And so, along that line as well, um, if you do get negative comments, how are you handling those?
We try to respond unless, some people who leave negative comments are just there to just yell, and in that case, we just delete the comment, um, because it's not worth engaging, you're not gonna get anywhere. If someone has a legitimate right, we of course will address that and communicate with them, because that's a problem that we wanna address and try to make better. So yes, we do, we have seen like one or two negative comments, but they were mostly people who are just angry all the time.
Okay, thank you.
I generally have something to say, I'm sorry. Um, I, I've seen the videos and I think they're really great, um, and engaging, so that's, I'm really happy to hear that you have a strategy for off-social media, like a ton of people are on social media, but not everyone, as we all know, you know, we're trying to communicate, you have to do it multimotively. Um, one thing that I thought while I was watching the videos, uh, which I think are very engaging, because you're like in there, you have like beautiful photography, there's voiceover, um, and it's then, like, at the end, it's like, here's what's coming up, and that's, like, great, um, but I was thinking that it would also be interesting to, I don't know, and I know it's tough, cause the events haven't happened yet, but potentially, like, highlight something that's coming up, just to give it that same, you know, at Segomedia treatment, to interview whoever's putting it on, or go to the location where it's gonna be, or something like that, just cause it's kind of like, there's a lot of information, and I know that that's not, like, you can't just like make it up, but maybe there's, maybe you can a little, you know?
You're right, that's a fantastic note, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
We can definitely work on that, cause right, we're right, so right now, it's just text on screen, the voiceover, that's explaining things that are coming up. Adding any B-roll or interview from somebody at those events, we can definitely try to accomplish that.
Cool, yeah, kind of like if you wanted more, you know, so that would be great.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thank you for the great content too already so far.
Yeah, and engaging people who are not on social media, if, if you know how to do that, you're.
I don't.
You'll make a lot of money.
Yeah.
Cause there are people that don't wanna engage, they don't engage.
Yeah.
And so that's why things like placement ads at Nick's Diner or stuff like that, where they can say, see what's happening in Oneonta at exploreoneonta.com, you know, and then you try to get them to at least pull up their phone, use a QR code or something to that effect.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And just my last note is that, uh, obviously, the summer's gonna end, and once the summer does end, our job doesn't end, we'll continuously be working on, working with college students, and we're, our main mission with college students is to go where they are and tell their stories so that we can try to reduce the divide between college students and students. We wanna show people what they're doing and have the public get engaged to those events and vice versa.
Have, with that, all of this round, have you worked, or worked out with Sutao and our, uh, marketing offices?
Not directly yet, but that's definitely not our plan to engage them right now, we're just trying to get our feet underneath us, um, but it is 100% what we're trying to do is work with everybody. And one of the things in our response, um, was to collaborate with anybody who wants to work with us, of course, we're working with this in Harrington, Cooperstown to cross-promote events, we're working with different organizations as much as we can, with the marketing and the college communities, we're talking with, you know, the president's office right now, um, and different things of that nature, so we will continue to build those relationships. Who else? Thank you. Uh, and again, any comments, questions, you can send through the submission form on Segomedia or exploreoneonta.com if you wanna get your events sent, uh, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Cory. Good luck. All right, now we're gonna jump back up to the council member discussion items. Yes?
I would like to make a motion. Whereas for the past 45 years, the Oneonta Job Corps Academy has been a valued neighbor and partner in the development of our city, and whereas the Oneonta Job Corps Academy has made countless community projects possible through its regular donation of student production and its instructors, instructors, expertise and oversight, and whereas in 2024, per its own budget, the academy had an economic impact on the community of $22,937,132, and whereas as an employment and training program, the Oneonta Job Corps Academy has had significant documented and life-changing success, with a graduation rate that exceeds many community colleges, and a career placement rate which ranks 32nd among all the centers in the country, and whereas the loss of the Oneonta Job Corps Academy would have a deleterious effect on our economy, our infrastructure, the capacity of our community services, and the quality of life in the city, and whereas the closure of the Oneonta Job Corps Academy would be the retraction of a helping hand, and of the opportunity for hundreds of young men and women to pull themselves from poverty and place themselves on the very ladder of success that is the American dream, in many cases providing precedent and role modeling to family, friends, and neighborhoods. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city of Oneonta stands in vigorous opposition to the potential closure of the Oneonta Job Corps Academy, advises all decision-making members of government to take note, and implores their support of this institution and its long-term future.
How's that?
I heard it.
There's a lot of whereas's in there, I just need to make sure that you can send a copy of that too, so she has.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, let's, oh.
Yes. It's great to take this resolution, but let's think practically about what we can do as council to actually, I mean, whether it's lobbying to the government leaders or, like, anyway, I don't, I don't really know what we can do to support Job Corps, but I think it's important to do something.
I think the first step, pass the resolution, and us as a council, get together and try to write a letter to our congressman and let him know the impact of, you know, overall impact, I guess.
I just, I agree. Um, there's need advocacy at the state level to make sure that our, you know, federal legislators are, like, doing what we need them to do for our rural community. Um, Josh Riley just, I think that he hears us, because he just, um, he, he just, uh, spoke out about it, um, sorry, I was looking for the news on it, it was like just a few, I actually saw it pretty more recently than that, but it could be, you know, the kind of thing that, um, but anyway, yes, so I mean, like you said, you know, just saying that we support it is one thing, and it was beautifully said, and I know that we all feel it deeply, um, but we have to put those words into action and hold people who can do something about it accountable. So, um, one resource that's been great, that was actually shared with me by the mayor, is, um, fivecalls.org, and they give you like a short script, um, so you don't even have to think about what to say, you just put in your zip code, and they tell you who the lawmakers are, uh, who will be voting on it, they give you a short script, call them, it takes two seconds, they all have staffers, so generally, you're not even talking to like the person, so you don't have to be like nervous, oh, I'm gonna call the congressman. Um, and, uh, and yeah, that's the best thing that we can do for sure, so.
Maybe, I know you're the, the agent to the county board, maybe we can get the county board to pass a resolution as well.
Oh, you know what, that's a good idea, I, I was just in context, so I will reach out to them to, and I'll share the wording that we have.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a clock to have a resolution.
And I did find the news for Katie.
Oh, you didn't hit it?
Yeah, he, Riley did call for release of the Job Corps funds immediately.
Yeah, there's a lot to it, but it's good to know that there's at least one person who has a kind of say in it, who can, who hears us.
Yeah.
Already. He's right here.
Okay. That was a motion? That was a motion, yes, motion to vote on the resolution. Yeah, you don't want me to have it, we're ready to do it.
No.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna take a vote. Councilmember Moshe Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo is not here. Uh, Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu.
Aye.
Councilmember Carson is not here. Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart.
Aye.
Councilmember Mattson.
Yes.
No, she was asking me a question, I didn't hear what she was asking, no, that's all Yes, so, um, Councilmember Moshe Campoli, thank you for, for that resolution, appreciate that. Um, so before we go, I was kinda waiting for her to come back, but, um, so there's gonna be correspondence, I know we have some members of Job Corps, you'll be able to speak, I promise. Um, we got a couple of public hearings in front of us, I think they're gonna be fairly quick, so let's work through the public hearings, get them out of the way, then we'll open up the course, uh, to the petitioners, and that'll be the time that you guys can speak, okay? I promise. All right, so a public hearing, uh, number one, it's in front of us, a public hearing before the mayor, it's received comments on proposed ordinance modifying chapter 194 of the City of Oneonta Municipal Code entitled Parks and Recreation. This ordinance was laid electronically on May 13th, 2025, and approved by the common council on May 20th, 2025. Is there anybody here to speak for that? If that's, yes. Just states your name and where you live, and you get about three minutes, so.
I have my. Uh, my name's Andy Mason, I'm co-president of the Delaware On Segomodus Society. Uh, I'm a city resident, I live in the sixth ward.
Sixth ward.
Uh, and, um, I'm here to speak about this issue of, uh, expanded hunting within the city and firearms. First thing I wanna say is that we, we do support the deer management plan that the city has in place. Uh, we, we recognize that there are problems with the deer population here, um, there's deer conflicts, there's, uh, vehicle collisions, there's ecological damage. Um, and so, uh, we do realize and we support, uh, the plan, uh, to reduce the population, and we also realize that there may come a time when firearms are necessary to be used as part of that, uh, as part of that plan. Uh, but our concern is, though, is about the type of ammunition that's used. Uh, typical ammunition is lead ammo, uh, for hunting deer, and, uh, lead is, I think everyone knows, is a toxic material, and it, uh, it affects humans and wildlife. Uh, when a bullet, lead bullet strikes a deer, it breaks into many fragments, some microscopic, spreads as far as 14 inches from where it hits the deer. Um, and so, it's, uh, it's not contained at all. Uh, and when the medicine is eaten by, consumed by hunters, by their families, people's children, uh, they are ingesting lead, and lead is, um, there's no safe limit of lead, uh, in any, any, any degree of lead, and there's no risk. Um, there are studies that show, uh, donated medicine to food banks, uh, has a high frequency of containing lead. Um, so it's, it's, it's shown very, very clearly that, uh, lead is an issue for human health, uh, and for wildlife, uh, bald eagles and other scavenging birds often feed on, uh, injured deer that escape, and also on the entrails of deer that, uh, are left behind by hunters. And, uh, there are many, uh, bald eagles have succumbed to, uh, lead poisoning in our area, uh, and that's demonstrated by wildlife rehabilitators taking birds in, and there's almost a spike after beginning of season. Uh, so what we're proposing is to, uh, require non-lead ammunition, uh, non-toxic ammunition, uh, within the city and actually get out, outside the city in the city of Oneonta. And, uh, we've written up, uh, a brief amendment to the legislation about our, uh, paragraph law that would, uh, do that. Um, and so we are, uh, we are, what we're asking the mayor of the council is to hold up on this regulation until, uh, the requirement for non-toxic ammunition can be added, and spoken to the environmental board, spoken to the Parks and Recreation Commission, that they're both supportive of this, and, um, contacted all of you with information, so, so that's where we stand, and we hope that, uh, we take that under consideration. Thank you.
Dave, this, this, uh, hold on, this, this, it's just a public hearing, but we voted on this the next council, right?
Well, well, I was gonna say, you should come to the legislative committee, because we sent it back, um, we sent it back to legislative, so we're rewriting it, we're reevaluating it.
Can I just say a clarifying statement, nevermind, there's a lot of it. There, we voted on two, last minute, we voted on two, um, related measures, and so one of them passed, and the other one was sent back to legislative committee, but they're entwined, so really, they both need to be looked at by the legislative committee, because Parks and Rec, the one that we're receiving comments on today, it's already passed the council, but, um, there's a provision in there, like a pair, one of the paragraphs speaks to weapons in the park, and then the other one is chapter 294, weapons, so there's, yeah, there's more kind of that needs to be, but at legislative committee.
Strongly ask the mayor to veto.
Correct, right, cause he can just not sign it, right? Chapter 194.
Are you asking us to veto power of the mayor?
Well, he needs to sign this, right? In order for, in order for it to take effect. Council voted on it, we're having a public hearing.
I believe if nothing happens, it's, it goes to the committee, it's, if he, if he doesn't, if he doesn't veto it, I believe he does.
Okay, gotcha, but he can veto it, but he has to be here?
I'm sorry.
Would he have to be here today to veto it, or can he veto it?
He's got three days.
Can you do this?
Oh, okay.
Can you do this?
No, I don't know, because the mayor's technically here, so I don't think I can do that as an acting, that's gotta be the mayor.
That's correct.
Yes.
But I think either way, like, we could just reconsider the chapter.
We just talked about that.
Yeah.
And I know that, you know, the one had gone through, and then, you know, we had questions about the second, and we said, I remember us, that coming up in discussion, that they were integrally linked, and so we would have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, yeah, and even though it's passed, I mean, every two weeks, we could reconsider it if we wanted to. Like, we shouldn't do that.
We, we can ask the mayor to respectfully veto it, get it back down to, to the, but so.
You can ask anything.
Yeah, whether he does it or not, that's up to him, or we can ask it.
Thank you, acting mayor.
Yes.
Should we take that a resolution, or just have a informal request?
We can just.
Yeah, probably.
I'm gonna defer to our attorney now.
Listen, you guys, you guys are in a public hearing, this is a public hearing time, this is not a time for motions, this is not a time to do anything else except do a public hearing. If you wanna bring it up after the public hearing is closed, or you wanna make a statement in the public hearing, go right ahead, but it's not the proper time to make motions by any means. Okay? You guys wanna make comments on the record, so we haven't closed the hearing yet, as far as I can.
No, I haven't closed it yet, no.
We have, we have, see, I can make a closes, you can make whatever statements on the choose, then the hearing is closed, then we get to the, get to the end of the petition, public hearing, correspondence column, then you can vote if you want with any reason.
And I guess.
Hold on, hold on, I'll, I'll tell you in a minute, I gotta, okay, so after we close, then if Tom, or then I wanna make a motion, it's after we close it.
I would, I would suggest you do it during the normal period of time, like, I mean, for example, you do have a council member discussion items, that's already passed, once you get to the, I would do it when you start to get to motions.
Okay.
Around the, the time.
Okay, sounds good to me, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, everyone, my name is Vera, I have been a resident of Oneonta for over a year.
Ma'am, could you say your real name, not just Vera?
Well, Vera Grace, my name is Vera Grace. Uh, I have been a resident of Oneonta for over a year, and a resident of the state of New York for over two years. In that time, I have spent hundreds of hours in our state's nature. From someone who spent six years in the Rocky Mountains, the devastating effects on our planet from human beings is quite apparent in the state of New York. I would ask the council to please consider adding a modification to chapter 194 to ban the use of lead bullets. The state of California, Denmark, and parts of the EU have already prohibited the use of lead bullets. In 1991, the federal government banned the use of lead bullets for water fowl hunting because the toxic material was seen as the cause of population level decline. There are countless studies on how harmful lead is, and within the New York State Department of Health, there is a program dedicated strictly to working with families affected by lead exposure. There are non-lead alternatives such as copper ammunition, and are available and can be used to reduce lead exposure to wildlife and humans. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation in 2024 expanded a statewide, multi-year cooperative study of how increased use of non-lead ammunition for deer hunting can improve the survival of bald and golden eagles. Hunters statewide are now eligible for a rebate of up to $60 for the purchase of non-lead ammunition for use during the deer hunting seasons. This is a public health topic, it affects us all. The circle of life is very much real, and I, for one, have been statistic for lead poisoning. Small changes lead to bigger results, and this small change can mean the life or death of an ecosystem. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this topic? I'm gonna take that as a no, so we'll go ahead and close this one. Yay. All right, uh, public hearing before the mayor to receive comments on proposed ordinance modifying chapter 25 of the City of Oneonta Municipal Code entitled Unnecessary Alarm. This ordinance was laid electronically on May 13th, 2025, and approved by the common council on May 20th, 2025. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this public hearing? Take that as a no, go ahead, close that one. Uh, number, public hearing number three, public hearing before the mayor to receive comments on proposed ordinance modifying chapter 280 of the City of Oneonta Municipal Code entitled Unnecessary Alarm. This ordinance was laid electronically on May 13th, 2025, approved by the common council on May 20th, 2025. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to this public hearing? Uh, see, nobody, we're gonna go ahead and close that. Um, all right, committee reports, uh, oh, I missed something, oh, yes, I promised petitioners, I'm sorry, I missed that. Um, this is where the public can, can speak to us, and you get about Um, this is where the public can, can be, uh, speak to us and you get about three minutes to, uh, state what you like. This is not a question and answer, you just kinda tell us how you feel and we'll go from there. Just state your name, where you're from and.
Hello, my name is Vanessa, I'm from Job Corps, I'm a child, do you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
That's, it's recording, it's not yet, not too soon.
Omiata Job Corps, I need to change my life for better. I've learned so much about myself since I was a girl. The staff at my center has helped me realize my potential. They've seen, they've seen I was the leader right away. Without their encouragement, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. I am a product of poverty and I came here to escape what's happened to my cycle. Unlike many students here, I have completed my training, but regardless, I'm still fighting for those around me. I have extremely anxious for my peers and what their future will look like. My heart goes out to the students across the nation who have already been in both their centers. We're extremely lucky despite running off at a time. Job Corps gave me hope and even under these circumstances, I have not lost hope. Both of my parents have passed away and I do not have any, um, support at home. I don't know where I would be without this program. It has provided me with shelter, stability, and well-heated structure. Job Corps has saved so many young adults over the past sixty years. I am happy to say that I'm lucky. It has provided me with so much more than education and career training. It has given me a safe space to be authentic and human. I know when I am emotionally distraught, staff is a shoulder to cry on. This program is needed for upcoming generations. Thank you so much for your support and your time today.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm pretty scared. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Denasia Elliott. I'm here today to share my story with you and I hope in these three minutes that I have, I am able to shed some light on not only my story, but the stories of the twenty-five thousand students that have been affected. Coming to Omiata Job Corps has honestly been one of the best decisions I've ever made. I was very skeptical at first, but the changes I've noticed in my life from being on this program are beyond my ability. The experiences I've had, the people, amazing people I've met have truly healed me in a way I can't even explain. Coming from an extremely dysfunctional family and jumping from couch to couch, I have no idea where I'd be without Job Corps. I can only imagine what other students have to deal with. I've met so many other students that have improved leaps and bounds because of this program. I really don't want to see that loss. So with that being said, all we're here, all we're asking for is that you're in this fight with us. Thank you so much for your time and I look forward to seeing you again.
Nothing to be nervous about, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Sorry. As many, as many of you have heard, just this past Thursday, May twenty-ninth, the Department of Labor sent out a statement requiring Job Corps centers run by third-party contractors to send home their students by the end of the month. June thirty. Since the initial statement, the BO has chosen to blindside the student body and staff with a new deadline for most students to be gone by Friday, June sixth. Later, changed to June thirty-two. While employees closure would put immense strain not only on already vulnerable population here only of Job Corpses, but the local communities as well. While the enclosure now only the state of New York and surrounding areas have to pick up the financial demand, the tsunami of students and staff will put on emergency housing, food stamps, cash assistance, and unemployment funds for the staff. Whether it be significant loss regarding the overall economy as well. Omiata Job Corps brings a scale of pursuit to there, whether it be like two miles of concrete via cement masons or participating work sites across town, needing one. There are people directly stimulating the economy by hiring third-party organizations to teach straight to you. We don't only support our local community, also HBI, OMI TBOCs, and MVCC satellite locations here in Omiata. Our county is a massive employer in the area, but the mayor mentioned that he's even worked there himself. We're here today to begin an injunction to protect our fellow students and employees that make the program work, to arrest that the Department of Labor are funding assuming and if, and if this is unsuccessful, I believe finding another source of funding such as state would be appropriate. I've sent an indefinite analysis on the cost of comparison that the state will endure to the social worker strain and contrast between overhead costs of operation of the centers specifically at Omiata. However, at this moment, I do know that if the student body two hundred estimated receives DVT alone, this one would be fifty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. In addition, another fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars was, would be paid out to employees and unemployment. I can't stress enough how important it is for local and state representatives to gain contact in this endeavor. Even if it's urgent, BO can stop its paws or by helping fund replacement funding. Thank you for your time.
What is it?
Madden Broder.
Madden? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stacy Mitchell and I reside at Ninety-three Street, Omiata. And I'm speaking, um, as the Minister of the International Society of Health and Social Services. Um, my congregation always supports, um, supporting Job Corps and however we can support this program and supporting not just the long-term ability for Job Corps to stay here in the city of Omiata, but also concerns if interventions fail and, uh, there is a need based on current law for, to vacate the premises by the thirteenth that we are, um, supportive and trying to find, um, ways to support the program in these, uh, young adults aged, I believe, sixteen to twenty-four. Um, whether it's an intermediate, a larger scale housing, um, to make a lot of fundraising in the community. So, um, you know, just like to find ways to support this program, uh, short-term and long-term.
Hi, my name is Sam McKay and, um, I'd like to speak to a little bit different direction about this issue and that is we keep hearing that we're all facing a little bit more difficult times. And one of the ways that we as a people can get through difficulties is to be there for each other. And I did teach at the University of Wyoming for, no, that was not, not what I was gonna say. At Suomi, I did teach at, I was, okay. At Suomi, for fifteen years, I worked with Job Corps. And, um, I, you know, I didn't think to bring in the testimony from my students, but I wish I had. It was the most powerful thing the students in education did because they went to Job Corps carrying all of the cultural, um, biases and prejudices that we have about people that are struggling. And they came back saying, these are the people that should need us. I was so impressed. I wish I knew how to be the kind of people that I saw the students I was tutoring are. Those people were gracious and kind and hardworking and they, all they wanted was a chance and our students, in education majors, loved to be able to help with that. It is a wonderful thing to help people they need. Perhaps now is a time for some of us individually to think of how we could provide some housing. This may be a time that neighborhoods step up and help out in ways you might not think of all the time. Some of us have extra rooms, some of us have extra food, some of us have contacts for how to help people in these situations. Let's try to come together as the community that we are and support when there's a real need. These students have put in our sidewalks, they built out of the airport, they've done all kinds of work over our community. They need our help. Let's individually try to think of how we could do that also.
Anybody else wish to speak?
John Hamel, from the Department of Police, Department of Ninety-One. As a Republican, I'm gonna say this really, I simply do not support President Trump's criminal law to eliminate Job Corps, much less firing him, what have you. The people that are at Job Corps, including friends of mine that work at Job Corps, are phenomenal. I would ask for better people to come into our city. I have requested that the council reach out to Senator Obrachter and our assemblyman and say, can you guys be an advocate for once for the people?
For once.
I mean, have the Job Corps people or his constituents gotta be saying something and speaking to Job Corps that have been voted off, which is seeming to be the regular forum. But there's a way that council can like reach out to them and say, let's, Senator, Job Corps people are your constituents. Let's get on board. Uh, so I was gonna say something else. And at least be there for them. Can write a firm letter to President Trump and say, cut the crap. And you get that, and let the Job Corps have the money to get that. Okay, so let's see.
Anyone else? What, once? Coming twice. All right, we'll close the petition section. And we do not have any correspondence. Now we can do committee reports.
Budget review first.
Budget review first.
So, Budget Review Committee met, um, at a meeting and our topic for presentation tonight is the fire department. So we had a very thorough presentation from our fire chief, um, about all the things that we need to know to help us with our budget review decisions. This month, we will have public works, targeted public works at our meeting. And, um, she's not here today, but Carrie, um, Disney clerk took the notes for the minutes for our meeting and they're very detailed, very thorough, so I encourage folks to check that out if you have, um, um, if you want a deeper dive into what the discussion was. Any questions? Yeah?
I just want to add, um, one of the main themes of our discussions was the fire department's need to be able to have, have funds at their disposal, to be able to plan ahead so that they can budget money incrementally to be able to make large purchases, um, eleven million dollar renovation of a building that they're looking at and, um, replacing equipment on a regular, capable on a regular rotation. And I think the concern was that if the fire department takes the money that they need, then we need more money in our budget overall to fund everything else. So that's the dilemma basically.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Finance and Human Resources Committee, which is probably a lot of the time on this agenda. Donna, did you take notes? Great, you took notes, right? Do you want to give the report?
Someone else is there.
I didn't take notes.
We're just gonna run through which on the consent agenda that was discussed.
Thank you very much.
Would you please?
Let's see, um.
I'll take notes next time, I promise.
So to kind of run through the consent agenda, the budget transfer for thirty thousand dollars, that was essentially, you know, in the past, we had budgeted roughly thirty thousand dollars in the materials and supplies code where we buy stone for certain pavement maintenance projects. This year, we're gonna be spending all of that on hiring contractors with a different process that we're using. So it's just transferring that money from one code to another with a DPW because that's over twenty thousand dollars. I can't approve that, we need council approval first. Um, number four, the RFP for the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, fifteen eighty-two is the standard physical and cancer screening services for firefighters. That's something that was included in the most recent collective bargaining agreement with our, uh, IFF union. So this is us awarding a contract based on an RFP to uniting diagnostic services. They're from Brooklyn and as Donna asked, rightly so with the committee, a, a meeting that should not require our firefighters to travel to Brooklyn for any testing and services. They actually come to the city of Omiata with a mobile vehicle. Um, this is a two-year agreement for various, uh, health and diagnostic services that are explained a little bit more detail in the, um, Finance and Human Resources packet that should be in your council packet tonight as well, I believe. It's the electronic version, not the print version. Number five, awarding a bid to, uh, upfit the police vehicle that we had previously authorized purchasing. That's based on a bid from JPJ Electronic Communications. It's things like the lights and radios, that sort of equipment in, in the police car. Next motion is to award a bid and sub-budget for purchasing four I hydrants and three I hydrant retrofit kits. These are fire hydrants that you see out in the city, operate the same way, but they also come with, um, the ability to monitor pressure at that location and communicate that through the cloud back to the city so that we can monitor for potential breaks and, uh, changes in pressure that might indicate a potential break or leak somewhere. Uh, these would be installed in a high-service area, which is Job Corps area, that level of elevation of the city that City of Omiata Harvard College. Um, the next one, talking about East Street improvements, that's establishing a budget for construction to milling paving section of East Street from Bugman Road down to Graduate Ave, bicycle entrance. That's approved, that work will move forward this summer. Same with Scrambling Avenue, improvements milling paving, same idea. All of those projects funded from New York State DOT, uh, the annual sources that we, uh, of funding that we get from them, CHIPS, state treatment route, et cetera. Motion number nine, Pyramid Design Systems to award, or to, to waive the, the, the purchasing procurement policies to allow us to award to Pyramid Pyramid. As you know, is our contracted IT consultant. We have some equipment we'd like to buy through Pyramids. We know we're getting exactly what they're used to working with, what we already have here in the state. That's relative to the transit hub. And then number ten is the resolution that's required by New York State DIP to allow us to install license plate and regular technology that we, the council had previously authorized and that we have purchased. This allows us to install it on the state road, which is Lettis Highway in this case. Uh, they require this resolution to go do that, so that is what this is for. And I think that is what we talked about. Maybe there might have been a couple other things that did make on the agenda that I can't remember most.
Yes, thank you, Greg. Okay, so, approval. Approval to, uh, approve the warrants.
Bye, thanks for coming, bye.
All right, motion that the common council approves the warrants totaling three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents and that the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Do we have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second, motion by, would you get those?
Elaine is the first.
And then, um, the second. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Marshall Compoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFarge Chu?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forser Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Masson?
Yes.
Motion to pass the consent agenda as it's, uh, been presented. Do I have a motion for that? Councilmember Madison, second by councilmember Marshall Compoyle. Sorry, I didn't see, I saw her first, I'm sorry. Yeah. Call a roll, please.
Sure. Councilmember Marshall Compoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFarge Chu?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forser Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Masson?
Yes.
City Administrator's report. I think you just gave a tip.
Uh, we do have another sales tax month in, so month of March, we received about four hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. It's about thirty-five thousand or eight point three percent more than in twenty twenty-four, March. So year-to-date, we perceived just over one and a half million, which is about forty-one thousand or two and a half percent more than twenty twenty-four over that time period. River Street Milling and Paving, I mentioned that, uh, or no, I didn't mention that, but the other one's River Street Milling and Paving. That is slated to begin the week of June sixteenth.
Yes.
Sidewalk replacement, you may have noticed, is ongoing, they're working on, uh, Chestnut Street, our main wall now. Overpool preparations are complete, looks great, I work by the end of the day. Obviously, the first day of pool being open with YMCA lifeguards there to operate is June twenty-eighth. That's been announced, I think, on, on our website, social media, you've seen it. Damaski Field, as Scott mentioned, Adrenic is there throwing up a pitch any minute now, I think. And that's their first home game tonight at seven p.m., so the field's been prepared. There's been obviously a lot of work, uh, going into that from our guys and girls down at the, uh, facilities, maintenance crew. Um, so it's a, a good night for that. That was all I had, unless you have any questions?
Any questions for our city administrator?
Nope.
Hi. I know they started work on the roundabout, uh, yesterday, is there any, um, is everything proceeding as expected?
Yeah, obviously, we've, we've received quite a few calls with, uh, confusion or concerns or complaints about the detour, now specifically Pine Street, signage on Pine Street was maybe not sufficient.
Yeah, something to flip me off, I was yelling at me and the machine at the sign that says, "Road closed." I'm like, "Oh, sorry."
Some confusion.
We, we have been communicating with New York State DOT on that, I believe they've, I don't know if they added any some of it.
Not yet, they won't, sure.
I saw a line up first.
Yeah, it was crazy.
The confusion there is that Pine Street is one-way normally, and it's gonna have to be two-way between Main Street and Potter Ave. So any residents down at the very end there are gonna have to go back to Potter Ave to come out. Uh, some people that are trying to cut through Pine Street to avoid the intersection are gonna find themselves unable to.
This is not something we didn't do, the last time we were doing construction over there, Pine Street became a two-way. So it's not like they haven't done this before, like people just are, they use it to cut through.
As Corey was saying, it's difficult to communicate to everyone who's not actively seeking out information, even though, you know, New York State DOT did explain this, it was included in their plans. Right, there are gonna be people, people will find out when they drive down the street. I think over time it'll compound, people get used to it.
That's fine.
Can I ask a silly question? Do you know if the DOT has any sort of, like VR capability with regard to being around about?
Our virtual reality?
Like, that you could practice driving around about?
I'm not aware of that. Go to Facebook.
Well, okay. I was trying to object oil about doing something that could potentially like, I don't know, promote positive feelings about around about. And so, yeah, I was, that would be ideal, is if people could just like, practice safely, uh, and get a, get a feel for it. So anyway, I'm just, I was wondering if you knew that that was like in there to about, but if it's not something you know that I'll reach out to them?
I've not heard of that.
Okay, that's sweet though, right? Listen.
It's like NASCAR, keep going to the left.
I am prepared personally, that is not a problem.
I know.
Oh, one other question about the roundabout, someone asked me, um, does DOT or do we have any plan for, is saving any of the plans to during that current, trying to.
Yeah, there was an email about that over the weekend, it's on K D G, it's on the local.
The plants there in Chicago.
Oh, yeah, so I shared that information with the garden club, but I didn't make it like widely publicly available just because that's a short timeline. Um, but people did go and take some things out of there. Yeah, iris and, uh, alum and there was a giant spiderita that I couldn't save, but I hope somebody could. So it's like, really splush, but anyway, so someone done, yes, I'll make it out live.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, so it was one of those things where like, I knew it wasn't gonna get to everybody, so I sort of put it toward people who I thought might take action quickly.
So, the resident in my neighborhood who was asking about that, is there still opportunities or is it?
Uh, I think once, once construction is underway, as it is now, and things are, uh, closed in the construction area, I think it's kinda too late definitely.
To wander in.
Well, not during the workday, obviously, but I think once, once construction fencing in that area is really cordoned off,
unless it's not, it's still open, which I believe, having not walked over there, I think the whole thing is probably getting cordoned off by now.
Just tell them not to be good dad.
It looks pretty poor.
And don't put it up for them to grab it. There's some barriers around it, but yeah, don't get hurt, don't get arrested.
We can't give, we can't, whoa, 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 hey. We cannot give advice to tell somebody to go do something that might be possibly illegal.
Of course, of course.
Or eventually get that.
You didn't let me finish, I said hypothetically.
I know, he just hypothetically.
Saved me from making a sermon.
Okay.
Mayor's remarks.
You have anything else? Or any other questions?
One other street's question, uh, people in my neighborhood have been concerned about the retaining wall on West Street, uh, near Green Park Ave, uh, which was slowly collapsing into the street.
Like opposite?
Like, yeah, like, like opposite, like from the corner, like just downhill from the corner of West from Green Park Ave, um, where there's water flow through the wall and apparently every year, and especially this year, it's leaning further. So, just request that somebody could have a look at that and assess the risk.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Any other questions for our city administrator? Alright, mayor's remarks, I'm actually gonna say something in this one for right now, I'd like to, all of our Ollie High School sports teams are awesome, and they put a lot of effort into it, and they all had good years this year. It was nice to see that our baseball team has come back with a good team. So, and, so everybody that was asking about the lights and sirens were going up East Street last night, that is our baseball team from Ollie High School coming back to just win the sectionals again. So shout out to all of our high school sports teams and, and thank you for, I think it's well deserved. Um, discussion agenda. Have we, have we have anything for discussion? Or additional business in council consideration, whatever you guys want to.
I just wanna make sure everybody got my invite to be in the pride parade this weekend. And if we don't use these to man ourselves off, we have to keep the rain off. So, if you didn't get the invite, um, I'll be leaving the parade in just a moment, I'd love to have that.
Scott?
Yes.
Uh, if, if anyone does wanna make a motion concerning what bullet, now would be a time.
Yep.
I'd step into a turn.
Okay.
Well, I have a question first, and do we wanna just ask the mayor informally, or do we want to, you know, make the motion?
Um, depends what your motion would be, I don't know what you're, what you're thinking about for a motion, I mean, we can ask the mayor, but.
Well, if he doesn't, rightly, it would be a resolution, you, you can, because again, there's no, there is no motion there. The motion would have to be to request, so it's, it's a formal resolution. I, I think it'd be most appropriate to just informally ask the mayor, you know, to sign it, so it's all worked out.
Are you making that?
But then it has to.
No, it's just informally.
Formally ask.
It could be in the, um, in the minutes, I guess.
So you're formally asking me to write an email to the mayor to formally ask him to?
Not the time.
Not, not to sign. The council's asking not to sign, to send it back down to legislative, basically, or something. Does that sound good?
Yeah, great, it seems like it has very, um, you know, um, support or, yeah, you know, or, yeah, looking at that again and revising that intention.
Yeah, can do that.
Uh, since that would be a legislative meeting, I just wanna say now that the environmental board, they're strongly supported the idea of, uh, let, read bullets. And I also want to ask a question about, uh, about the rules, because as far as I know, there was no hunting allowed in city parks as opposed to, uh, but as opposed to open space. So, I think the way this is written fits the, as somebody who's looked at it in legislative training, um, because it refers to hunting in parks, but actually, hunting has been taking place in overly open space area.
Uh, yes, we talked about that in the new parking rec, and we're actually, somebody I guess who's interested, at the July meeting, um, we are gonna ask our town management coordinator to come because, yeah, generally, the hunting is not happening now in parks. And we've been talking about, um, just that there isn't really anywhere safe to, and we actually referenced, you know, that last year, when hunting was taking place in the town, you know, adjacent to the city college and stuff, that it was too close, right, to human activity for that to be operated safely. And so, how realistically, logistically, could anyone hunt in the park? I think that if I recall it correctly, the intention was to possibly allow for both hunting in certain areas of the city within the city limits, um, not hunting with guns. But that question was brought up at parks yesterday, so I guess just briefly, like, the request was that, um, Susan or town management coordinator come and just create, kind of re-go over the strategy with everyone to make sure that we're all comfortable with what is gonna be happening in the parks in the future. Because the idea, I know, is to expand the number of parcels, um, overall, you know, in a strategic way, and just figure out like where parks fit into that.
I just wanted to add, wasn't, wasn't their point about it being like specific individuals who are vetted for that purpose to?
Right, so there's a certain.
I just wanted to, you know, clear that.
Yeah, there's a certain number of tags, and they also have to, um, yeah, so they have to be like licensed by the D E C. They have to be licensed through the program, which is in the legislation. Um, and, yeah, there's a specific number of tags that are issued to be able to do that. Um, and actually, that was one thing that we discussed, I don't know if you were still there at that point, with regard to the possibility of enforcing the no-lead, um, proposal, which is that they have to, uh, report their harvests, anyone who hunts under the program. And so, there might be a way to, you know, tie the privilege of participating in the program to reporting the harvests using lead-free ammunition. So, that was all discussed yesterday, but I think that we all probably could use, feel that because we always are like, Susan wants to learn, but she has it all under control, I think that. And so, there's, I think we could probably all use a refresher on where we are in the program, what's next, everywhere's legislation, it's, I think. So, first, I haven't confirmed it with her, but tentatively first, the next parks meeting, which is the first Monday in July, which is probably the fourth of July? No, fourth of July is a Thursday this year, sweet. Or Friday, Friday. Friday, it's a Friday, nice, okay. So, it won't be on the fourth of July.
If it ever warms up and stops raining.
So, it could be the seventh of July.
That's right, yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, oh, I should also say that the Parks Commission was strongly in favor of using the lead-free ammunition, writing that into the legislation. Um, and they even suggested, and this would require some research, because we don't know if any, if ammunition is sold anywhere in the city, but just like, um, considering gaining the sale of lead ammunition in the city, like in the city limits, so. That was a suggestion that was made, because maybe all of it took, let's say, two or three minutes.
Any else?
Um, I don't know if we can talk about this or not, but I just, uh, the item that was on the agenda that got pulled, um, is my concern, is the O P T, um, Title VI policy. Um, I mean, you guys probably saw my email, I just wanted to reiterate the importance that the policy as it was, was just a big kind of like check in the boxes, and I think this is an opportunity for kind of looking to do better as far as making it easier for people to file discrimination claims as well.
And knowing their rights, I really liked that about your proposal, making it more clear how they may be protected, and what to do if they're not protected, demographic.
And I don't understand the issue behind it, but, uh, the police department complete online platform is pretty well designed. If that could be modeled, I think it'd be a citywide, that would be great.
Yeah, that's probably what you need to explore, uh, venture, right, yeah.
I, I believe, if I read your email right, Greg, is you guys are gonna take a look at this with Dave Corey and then you're gonna come back to the Finance and Human Resources.
Yeah, that was one of the ones I forgot, you talked about looking at it, so we'll just bring it back through that process, answer the fifteen or so questions in my chat and email, and go for that.
So if anybody else has any other questions or comments about that, if you wanna forward them to Greg, and you can forward them, as they're working on it with Dave Corey, and come back. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, during the committee meeting, I had asked if they had any complaints in, to the best of my knowledge, they had never been filed with this.
It's like there was at least three years of data that was included in, there were zero within those years at least, so.
One question I wanted to raise, have there been no complaints, has there been no problems or have there been complaints because the process was so confusing and nobody knew how to file?
This is where I think Dave's, you know, you know, from HR perspective, is, is helpful.
Anything else?
I, I just wanted to inform the council that Title VI announcements are posted on every bus and in almost every building in the city, um, so that was one of the questions, one of the posts. It has to be by law. Also, Title VI plans, um, usually are different depending on the agency. And that's why I just want to tell you that those are Title VI programs, so it's very dependent on the agency's regulations.
Anything else?
With regards to the Title VI policy?
Yeah, okay. Anything else for discussion?
Yes?
Yeah, go ahead, I, I don't.
Okay, well, one thing that I'd like to talk about, um, just briefly, is, oh, I have notes on it here, actually, so I make sure. Um, so, is taking a more proactive approach to communication. Um, so it's something that I talked about, um, I wanna say it was after legislative committee meeting with a couple folks, but, so like, for example, this has come up a bunch of times. I, um, did, you know, hit the mayor, he was sitting here, and then also, he mentioned that he, like, wasn't even here for some, like, a few, a bunch of days this week. Um, but that was sort of like a casual mention and not any sort of like, um, there, there wasn't any sort of like duty, right, to let me know that or any of us. Um, and so that's been kind of something that has been tossed around, but there's never really been a solution given other than the mayor, and that just marked, the mayor should let council know, right, like, whether or not he's physically present in our, our community, you know, if he goes to Albany for the day or whatever, but, you know, he's gonna go away for a week. Um, and that sort of got me thinking about, oh, this is a big conversation, you guys, it's a public meeting one, so, um, just ways that we can be more connected as a legislative body. Um, I think that, for me, just in terms of putting solutions forward, it would be helpful if the mayor, again, not just Mark, but the mayor's decision, um, really viewed itself more as like a liaison, right, from council, where we make, where we take a bunch of things of action and set city direction, to city staff, um, coordinated by the city administrator, and that there was a two-way sort of conduit of information from one to the other. Um, I see.
Um, I see that looking like possibly a calendar that is shared with us, not of what everybody in the city is doing, but like the mayor's calendar. So we know what he's working on, who he's with, um, and of course, in an official capacity, not, you know, I have a doctor's appointment. Um, and you know, and I think, and the way that I'm thinking about this is I think that would be a reasonable request if it were reversed as well. So like, am I gonna have a coffee, am I gonna have, you know, meetings with constituents or something? You know, and it maybe it doesn't have to be super detailed, but literally just like a Google calendar, like, oh, I'm gonna meet with Josh Riley, right? And then we could, you know, if there was something that the council felt was important, like the job working, we could say, you know, we really hope you'll advocate for us for this. They will help us act more as like unified than, um, right now, where a lot of times we find out about things because they've been written about in the paper. Um, and additionally, I think at a minimum, like a weekly email, I know that, uh, Greg, I know that the city administrator and the mayor meet weekly to discuss like what's going on. Um, I have no idea what you guys have talked about ever before in your whole tenures. Um, so I think it would be great to say, you know, I talked with the city administrator and here's what's going on at the city and now you know that, you know? Um, so I would love to see that happen. And again, you know, if thinking about if it was reversed, right, like here's what's important to my constituents, I'd be happy to report on that. You know, here's what's important to city staff and what's going on, you know, it seems like those are reasonable requests to make of, you know, because it does say in the charter that the mayor, you know, is the liaison basically to the city staff. So, um, so that that is one thing that I have in mind in terms of improving communication, I'd love to get some thoughts on that. Um, and maybe I'll start there and just open it up for anybody else's thoughts before I move on to the second thing.
I'm staring at Mike cause it looks like he's warming warming up.
Mike's like me, like there's always something that he probably could say about it, so.
Well. My concern is not as much communication between council and staff because I feel like even though it's not formalized, we work together. But I consistently hear from my neighborhood that they, it's not transparent what goes on in city hall and that they don't trust the city government. Um, and so I think that could be a step towards transparency. Uh, another similar thing I wondered is although people can find things like the city council agenda on the website. Like, I know people have asked to receive it and I don't know if that's possible from a clerk's office perspective to develop. Like I'd I'd develop a mailing list of people who would get the, you know, when we get the council agenda that they could also get it.
Well, it sounds like that could be like a Nixle, like check out the, you know, if you texted agenda to Nixle and then that list potentially they could get sent a link when a Nixle could go out and the agenda's posted.
In general, too, I would love to see us, um, maybe do a push or, you know, just encouragement to get more people on Nixle. Because I'm constantly surprised by folks who have lived here, you know, at long periods of time who have never heard of Nixle still. Um, and then, you know.
Jamie wants to talk about Tyler, so.
Oh, okay, so maybe we wait for Tyler, but you know, like even just the nuances of it, like I had constituents who repeatedly told me, oh, I gotta use Luke's list and get Luke to give you his list. And eventually it turned out it was a Nixle list, she didn't have a list. But ultimately, I do think that things like that are stronger because if I develop my own personal list, that doesn't have any longevity, right? But if I help develop a Ward one Nixle or some kind of Tyler tech, you know, um, component, that is something that the city has and can go on in perpetuity. You know, so I would really love to see us do some kind of campaign for Nixle. I really thought about it like when we got some of the, um, uh, uh, correspondence about the deep street parking lot. Because one thing that was noted was, well, people didn't know because they aren't on Nixle. And I'm thinking like that is an example of a place where it should be fairly easy for us to reach all of those tenants, you know, by putting up posters or whatever, you know, the method is. Um, and, you know, get as many people as possible onto that Nixle system or whatever the next iteration is.
I wanna step back because my brain just went ding, your ward has the best Nixle if I remember right.
Thank you.
And rest of us were going out trying to build ours up.
We did have a campaign.
I think we kind of fell a little short of what Ward one is, so Ward one is actually the setting the gold standard there.
Yeah, and I I think it's one of those things, it it probably needs to be done annually, semi-annually, you know, because people are always moving and, you know, things like that. So it's it's a good idea to just keep that, you know, message kind of rolling periodically so that we can capture as many people as possible.
Oh, yeah, none of us are even close to you.
Oh, oh, are we doing embarrassing?
None of us are even close.
Hold on, hold on, wait a minute.
I'm I'm about half of what you got.
Six point of sixty though, that's pretty good. Don and I are tied for third, twenty-six.
How many are on the board, just out of curiosity?
Hundred and twenty-seven.
And, uh, seventh ward?
Um, one thing I I was thinking like that is, uh, I know you were, you kept saying like the mayor's office, the mayor's office, which I agree with. Um, don't forget, we can, with an arm shot here of our city administrator who reports directly to us, we can tell him that we wanna list of what the meeting lists are or whatever, what he's doing. We can ask him for that, our city administrator, what are you doing, well, we have a meeting on Friday, what's the meeting, what did you discuss, like we can get, or or a detailed thing, what he's doing, you know? I understand he's busy, I'm just saying like we could, you know.
Well, that's in my mind, like that's why we have a mayor, right? This is somebody who is, you know, more connected than we can be or would be practical for us to be because there are eight of us. So just really making the most of that opportunity to be more transparent about what's going on, what's going on here, you know? I mean, if I don't know, then how, I mean, and I'm like choosing, right, all the time to get involved, things get sent directly to me. I mean, I don't know how someone who simply lives in the community could feel like they are not being constantly just like blindsided by things because they're not getting a heads up on things. Um, so I, for me, like, that would help increase transparency, I think, to council without making it, and I see what you're saying, but without making it Greg's responsibility. Um, although I do have an idea for that too, so that was my second thing, so, um.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, that's okay, that was okay, but like just in terms of, again, like working more as like a team and thinking about the roles that we all play. Um, Mark is here every day, so it'd be really great to know, um, from him, but not only just what city staff is doing, like what he's doing. Like, is he going out and, not from an accountability standpoint, but is he going out and speaking with our state and federal legislators on our, on behalf of the city? And are those conversations based in conversations we've had here as a body? Or are they, you know, sort of personal goals, which I'm not passing judgment on putting a value on those other than they're either formed by the legislative body or they're like his own ideas. So, um, you know, I think that that's, it's very opaque right now. Um, and this is for me a suggestion to try to make it more, um, transparent and collaborative in terms of the way that we operate together.
I'm gonna add, because I I have found in the past that there have been like some significant moments when Mark will pick and choose what he disseminates to each person. Every person gets different information and we have to kind of like put it together and like make something out of it to not get like sideswiped and then find out it's in the newspaper, you know, nothing. So, um, you know, I've always been an advocate for like all of us getting the same information at the same time. That, you know, he shouldn't be picking and choosing and having people in his office and, um, you know, deciding what he's gonna share. I'm not quite sure what that would look like, but it's something, you know, especially when he was talking to downtown businesses, we knew nothing about it.
Right, like the mailer.
We knew nothing about it.
The mailer, it would have been great if he had been like, hey, I'm working on a mailer, we could have been like, oh, what's it gonna say? Right, but, you know, anyway, but.
We're looking at trying to be more transparent as a whole. I remember like we we were working on that first council, I say first council, it's on my second term, but I guess my first term and, you know. We kind of like made some good progress, then we kind of like hit a wall and we just kind of like reverted back and we had that really good workshop with our city staff. And I remember like the bubbles and this and that, we're going down through things. Um, I I like, you know, I I don't know, I don't have the answer because each mayor that comes in and sits in the seat is gonna be something different.
Right.
They're gonna run something different, but that's why the city administrators is reports to the council. You know, and then the 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 mayor is supposed to, the mayor's in in the charter, Greg just refreshed my memory with it, specifically he says, and they're supposed to be the, they work with the city administrator to drive the council's priorities and make sure that they're. So he could, we could sit there and say, these are our priorities at the very beginning or whatever, and Greg, here it is, this is what we want. And then, you know, the mayor is supposed to help drive that, but we can always ask the the city administrator, well, where do we stand? Like, can you give us a monthly report or bi-monthly or whatever, you know?
He does do that, I mean, that's what these are. I think the, uh, so two things, one is, you know, the mayor is changing, um, the city administrator can change too, I mean, you know, not for nothing. And, um, but so for me, like Elaine was saying, how the Nixle is institutional. What I'm sort of looking for is an institutional structure that no matter who the mayor is, this is something that the mayor does. So, um, and I think, you know, setting, we make set intentions at the beginning of a term, but this council has changed in our second term. One, two, three, at least three times already. Um, and, uh, you know, things change every two weeks, there's stuff, you know, that comes up or whatever. So I think having it be more dynamic, um, and it's not about. This is more about, because those conversations are happening anyway, right, the mayor and the city administrator. So I guess it is a teensy bit about accountability, um, to say that those conversations are in service of the work that we do as a council. Um, and not, and if they are in service of other things, that we're at least aware of it. Does that mean so?
Thanks.
So I get it.
The only thing I'm worried about is increasing the workload for Greg or for staff to, all that record keeping can be time consuming.
Well, I mean.
Depends what level of detail you're.
I'm, well, so I'm proposing that the mayor do it, not staff.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to add, I was waiting for my turn to add.
No, it's really, I'm sorry.
That, you know, I I I think, I just wanna, you know, reiterate, I think transparency is one of our highest priorities. I think it's something that we need to do ongoing and I think, you know, one of the things that is most important to transparency is communication. You know, so I think that, um, you know, that we need to communicate what we're doing and not even just in one way, I think we need to repeat those communications. I think we need to, um, provide those communications in various formats, you know, depending on what the communication is. Um, but, you know, just really, you know, agreeing that this is an ongoing conversation, I I, you know, it's not something we're gonna do and be done, right?
So we're gonna keep talking about this, so, yeah.
I just wanna tag on to that a little bit, is we we've done, I I just want us to remember, we have done a lot in the way we've changed. So city staff has changed a lot in how they do stuff, like a lot of stuff has gone online that that we haven't done before. Um, you know, various departments are making sure stuff gets posted on our website. Um, you know, they they make themselves available. You know, again, we're also one of the few municipalities that our offices stay open even during lunchtime, they always make sure somebody's within that office. We try not, they try not to close the office, which a lot of municipalities, you might only be able to go see your city clerk Tuesday through Thursday. Monday and Friday, they're busy doing other stuff, they're not gonna, you know, open up and see it. We we try to make sure our staff does that and, you know, our finance department, there's always somebody there that can answer a question or get you to the right spot. So, you know, we have increased, our city staff has really gone to to increase, I just wanna keep that, even though we keep, I think as a legislative body. We're we're struggling in how, what's the best way to to get to our constituents, our constituents get back to us, we get into our city staff because we don't wanna overburden them. And then we started writing out all the emails to Greg so Greg can just, and we were overly loading Greg and then we're, you know, it's like, how do we have this continuity of, on how to do it? And that's kind of been the struggle since I've been elected and Katie's been elected and, you know, and and I I completely agree with you this, how do we, how do we do this?
Yeah.
And, you know, like I said, yeah, it's great, but if another mayor gets in here and said, yeah, I'm not gonna follow what you guys want, I can, you know, there's no recourse for us.
I mean.
You know, I'm hoping they wouldn't do that, I'm just.
Do they have that authority to do that? Like if we said, you know.
You are not the mayor's boss.
Well, I know that, but I.
The mayor is not your boss.
Right. But I mean.
I mean, if the mayor said, I'm not gonna talk to anybody unless they provide a daily schedule of what they're doing in relation to the city, in relation to the constituent affairs, you would say, I think that's a problem.
I mean, I would do it, I'd be like, I check my email.
What you can, you you feel feel free, sorry, you can communicate with the mayor, if you're, if you're city related, that's that's fine, I just, they, I, you're, you're, I I don't think you can demand communication.
Well, okay, so I take issue with the characterization of demand, um, because only because the mayor is not our boss and yet he makes requests of us very rarely.
Which you can, you can agree to or sometimes people don't conform to his requests.
But there are sort of like institutional things, and so what I'm suggesting is creating an institutional thing.
How much time do you have?
Let's do it.
I'd be happy to talk to you about the, it's not, I won't waste anybody else's.
Oh, okay.
But I can tell you what has happened in the city when we had commissions, for example. Capital, my first point was the capital budget planning commission. There was a, there was a public safety commission that hired policemen, I mean, they had the changes in the city and your administration, the institutionalization. Again, until Mayor Letts was here, there were no committees at all, none. And we come in and the council would start at seven o'clock and start looking at bills. So again, it, and so all I'm saying is that, is that, go ahead.
Okay.
Communicate all you want.
Thank you.
But I I think Scott's, Scott is.
If you're gonna say I'm right, I want to carry here first.
He's really struggling with saying that you're right.
I I think his observations are 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 pretty accurate.
Yeah.
I'll take it, that's close enough that I've ever.
He is pretty.
Now that my head's like this, um, I I get, I I don't know, I I'm I'm with you Katie, we've been struggling this for years.
Well, I just, we do a really good job of admiring problems for years and years and years. And so it'd be really awesome if we could figure out a way, a structure to increase communication. We did a full day seminar on a Saturday and have not had, I mean, really even follow-up conversations about it. And this is not about communicating with constituents, although I think it's in service of that. Um, you know, I think that there's a level of, uh, personal effort that varies from person to person to person. Um, but, you know, how do we as not full-time, uh, not inherently connected to the system council members have a really good idea of what's going on? And how do we solve the three-body problem that has been the issue with having a council administrator form of government with a mayor for a decade? Or however long, um, because we have, uh, there are three heads on the beast and it's really kind of been tricky. And I think that you, I think that you and Mark have done a really nice job of facilitating, moving us forward. Um, it's just a matter, I think, of getting us all together at the same level and doing it all together. So anyway, I I'm open to ideas, if we can't make quote demands of the mayor, I'm open to ideas for sort of institutionalizing as what, as best we can. Some sort of communication strategy as we are about to have a new mayor, uh, who's gonna come in. And they always, everybody who comes in thinks they have, you know. And they always, everybody who comes in thinks they have, you know, they know exactly what they're going to do. And if we don't provide any framework, then we're at the mercy of whatever they think they're going to do, so.
Boundaries setting early.
Yes, thank you. It feels like the time.
Very well said.
Feels like the time to set boundaries. In terms of how we function.
I go back, I go back to the one person that we have, I hate to say take control, because I'm not set, but the one person who's responsible to us.
Uh-huh.
And that's, I think, where you have to kinda sit there and sit, as much as it's hard, because you're gonna put more work on them. But this is what we expect. And sometimes we have never had that conversation either, of our poor city administrator. We never kind of been flying by the seat of his pants, because we've never come in as a council as a whole and said, well, here's our priorities. He kinda listens to how we go, how we kinda do things. You know, we've never really set a priority list from us, from the council.
We have like documents, we're consistently proving and updating documents that he's working from. But it's more like the things that shift, I think, that are challenging, like moving targets, making sure that we're all aware of those. It's kinda where I'm trying to, I'll stop talking, thank you.
Okay.
Katie, something you said to me last week, um, about the need for like a, a policy, not a policy document, I forget what you called it, but essentially
Probably a video or that.
A, a record of the way things happen. Sort of not, not every council and every mayor is recreating the legal, and I don't know. I'm not sure what exactly you had in mind, but it seemed to me that like when I started my council, I would, that would've been very valuable to me to be able to find out, you know, like, it took me like two, three months to realize, oh, it's, it's finance and human rights commission. It's kinda helped set the consent agenda for the council meeting, you know, like, like that's obvious now, but it took, you know. And, and, so I, I don't know, um, but did that dovetail into what you're talking about, about institutionalizing?
Stuff in general, yeah. Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Yes, so my second thing, which is also on topic, on the topic that we touched on, and sort of what you were saying, is that I wonder if it would be possible to get a heads up on things from the city administrator that may be coming like to committees, like, hey, we're working on this. And so in the next few months, you can expect the finance and human resources committee to talk about X, Y, Z. You can expect, you know, I don't know, really, you set, mostly set the agenda for the finance and human resources committee, but, um, that's it, that's the whole idea.
Kinda like, kinda like we're working on, this is our global plan, what the city staff is working on.
Yeah, so like in the next few months, expect these sort of things to come up and then that would just give us an opportunity, I think, to be a little bit more proactive. You know, maybe something where we're comfortable waiting for everything until we have questions, or maybe it's like, oh, I'm really interested in that. You know, can you tell me everything in advance because I really need to know? I mean, I know you're like, no! But, but then it saves us from getting to a council meeting and going, oh, actually I have a lot of questions about that and you've been doing work on it for three months. And now I'm gonna hold up the process because I wanna ask all my questions. Do you know what I mean? So it's kinda like double edged, I think.
Yeah, I think there's another step in the strategic plan that we started to build last year, um, or continued to build last year, which is the third level. We don't have that yet, which are the action items that really are driven by staff that support the strategic priorities that the councils come up with. And the council approves those, and then those are our actions, those are our priorities for a period of time. That will not be like changed every week or, you know, on a whim based on whatever issue might come up. But are those are the core rocks that we're focused on this quarter or this year, that sort of thing. And then there's a structure to how that, I think that's the structure, part of the structure that you're gonna be thinking about is that's the guiding document, the main guiding document for how staff is going about this job. Outside of the, you know, the daily tasks and things that are done without anyone having to tell us to. Um, and then that ultimately, I see the strategic plan is how the city administrator's job and the staff's job should be judged. Are we accomplishing the strategic, strategic plan that we all agreed upon or not? And if not, you know, how do we change it and do better? Um, so that you're not, you're not getting into the weeds, you're not micromanaging on a particular issue that comes up that becomes the issue of the day, but it's like how do things fit the big picture? If that makes any sense. As far as providing a preview of agendas to come down the line, um, you know, I, we can just throw things out, here's, here's ideas. But really, to add back and forth with questions about it, then it creates, instead of it being a future issue, it becomes a now issue.
Sure.
And just throws off, you know, we're not ready to discuss it further. It might just be getting hopes up or putting ideas out there that then don't come back ever or come back later on at a time to be determined. So I'm not sure right now, without putting a lot more thought into that, how that could be done in a way that's valuable and doesn't just start a conversation pretty early about a particular topic.
I think that's a valid concern.
You know?
But Greg, I, I think there's a point when you know something's gonna come to us that maybe you don't know when exactly. Like, like you mentioned, um, I forget which committee it was after, maybe it was finance and human resources, but that the parking, I mean, it was, it was quality of life, actually, you know, that a parking plan that you're in the process of developing, a parking plan that you'll bring back to us. So that's at the point where, like, it's concrete, it's just not ready for us yet, but it seems like.
Yeah, I mean, that's been a, you know, five, 10-year process, really, really.
Excuse me, that's uncool, right?
Not, not exaggerating. I mean, I mean, there's, things kind of inch forward or jump forward and then sit for a while. There's not enough time in the day for any particular, everything to be moved forward at that time, so it, it really changes priorities. Um, so, you know, using that example, if you have much questions about that now, it becomes a now issue, it's not a future issue. So, I guess, I don't know what we do with that. So I say, okay, yeah, we've been talking about parking for a while, everyone knows that. We're still talking about parking. We're hoping to bring some sort of a more formal discussion for it at some point, but does that then lead to questions that you want answered now, that we're not ready for yet? I don't know, um, I guess I could throw.
Maybe, maybe we have, maybe for us, ask questions, but not expect answers. So, so you know that-
See an idea of what we're looking for.
Right, yeah, so that I can inform the process, so that we don't, like, I'm, I guess, I've been literally, I feel like shouting from the mountain this for years, but I think the earlier you can give us a heads up on things, the more collaborative the process becomes. And to your point, it doesn't have to be, I need to be at every meeting, but I can tell you, here's what's really important to me about this. So that before you put it on my desk and I go, well, you didn't address the important thing. Well, you didn't know what the important thing was to me, so how could you have done that? So I think trying to give us as much of a heads up as possible allows things to be worked on in a way that guarantees or at least helps, you know, ensure that they will be more successful without drama, without last minute, like, I object. You know, so I think that that would, um, benefit our organization tremendously. And I definitely see the pitfall that you're thinking of, but maybe there's a solution kind of in the middle, like Mike was saying, where we can just say like, you know, and maybe not everything can be worked out, but then you can say like, we looked into that and here's why it didn't work out, you know, or something like that, so that it's addressed. Again, earlier on in the process, as opposed to being like a fully formed, you know, j- Jell-O, like I'm looking for Jell-O, you know, as opposed to like rocks.
Are you able to define what types of things you wanna know about in advance?
Ooh, that's a good question.
Versus what you don't wanna know, or? I'm gonna make a joke, but I won't.
I think that's a good question, okay.
You know?
But this ties, this ties back, this ties back to a need for a strategic plan. Yeah, a strategic plan that the council has agreed upon and brought together and as a group have said, this is what the priorities are. Then you can always, then there's always a standing against which you can measure the activity. If you say, we want you to tell me about what's going on that you, that we don't know about, that, that always raises problems. Because if you, if you establish what the, if you guys get together and say, here's the strategic plan, here's what you should be doing. Then you always have a benchmark as to how, whether they're performing it or not. But until you guys get together and say, here's what the strategic plan is that we're gonna support, that we're moving toward, then, then everything is whack, everything's whack.
Cause that is what really put us as the, put us towards the driver of those priorities, right? And so, yeah.
Tell, tell us what you have in the future.
I hear where the- Yeah, I feel like I hear the pitfall also of like, tell us what we don't know, is also like, then if something gets missed, you know, things like that. Um, you know, so, yeah, there's gotta be a way to, to work this out. So that, you know, people are getting-
Please do, Dawn.
So, so that you're getting the information that you need, um, you know, I think, I'm just trying to think through.
So, one of the tools-
And I know that we worked on that strategic plan, you know, and it sounds like we need to revisit and, you know, continue to develop it.
Well, so I don't have, I don't take any issue with the strategic plan. I think it's that things can be cer- certain, you know, once things get to be sort of specific, and maybe it is just yes or no, but I find that, you know, I think, once things start, sort of get to be specific, they can be tied to the strategic plan, but it might not be, I don't know. Or even if it's something like parking, you know, saying, it's, parking is of course, parking, figuring out our parking issue is something that we all are in, you know, agreement about. But like, does it get to a point where, like, this is the plan, yes or no? That, I mean, that has happened to me more times than I can count in six years. Or does it, do we say, you know, it's really important to me that we increase, do we get the opportunity early on to say, it's really important to me that we increase accessible parking on Main Street proper? Right? And that gets built into what ultimately lands on our desk? Or do we wait until it gets plopped and then we say, well, this doesn't have enough accessible parking spots on Main Street? Because it's still in line with the strategic plan either way. And I don't think that that's, I, I would, I don't care when you take your lunch, I don't care when Jenny goes to the bathroom, but I do care about the strategies that are put into and the, and some of the details that, of the big things that our community cares about, like, are there enough accessible parking places on Main Street? So, characterizing those things as micromanaging, which could have been done in council past, feels not quite accurate, you know, cause we are here to make a difference in those things, or at least I am. To make sure that the things that get put forward are representative of our community's, uh, interests.
I just got a question, so as I'm listening to you do stuff, if we start doing this by email or whatever, we're taking away the transparency of asking the questions out in public. You see what I'm saying? Like, we're, we're, cause half of, half of the city stuff is, we, we discuss it out here. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it's discussed out here because of open meetings law. And we're discussing out here, we're public, can hear our concerns, why we, because, I mean, one of the things I hear is, well, you blanket yes, everything to the city staff. You never sit there and say no. That's, you know, which isn't true, because if you really listen to what we talk about, we, there's times that we have, the city staff has put a lot of work into stuff and we voted it down, or we just paused and said, we're not gonna do it, or, cause that's not the direction we wanna go in. But I think you take away that transparency if we're starting to do the question and answer through email and then I just see the work of whoever our foil person is, I have no idea who that is, is it Carrie? Going up because they're gonna, we're gonna, our emails are gonna get foiled left and right.
I was just thinking that.
So, you know.
Well, maybe it doesn't have to be an answer, maybe, okay, so like for minority spicy people, or minority divergent folks, one of the tools that they use is like when they're working on a paper or a project, is like writing the conclusion first, right? And then that way, like, they know where they're headed with this. And then they can plan the in-between and have certain points that they wanna make in a direction that we're not going off. And I feel like that's kind of in line with this. Because it's like, if you let us know, hey, we got this parking stuff coming up, then that can be like, hey, here are my very specific points that I may have questions around. I'm not expecting anything from you. But now you get to go because you kinda know what the conclusion's gonna look like and make sure that it's kind of a little bit more tailored, so not everybody's having to ask like a thousand questions, you know what I mean? Like, uh, that's how, is that what you're, that's how I'm taking it?
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean. Yeah.
So it's like, I wouldn't expect answers, like, so it's not like not transparent because you're not answering. It's just more so like, hey, this is what my board is concerned about, here's, you know, what we're gonna be looking at, here you go. And then you get that from each person and then it's, you know, your conclusion gets to be better, you get to have a better, yeah.
Nailed it, yes. I think the other thing is, I get answers via email literally all the time. I have a question, send it out, I get an answer. Doesn't happen in a public meeting. Um, it's my job then, it's my perspective, that the more information that I have about things, the more I can share with the community who gave me the responsibility to do that. So, the less information I have, the less time I have to think about things, I mean, that feels less transparent to me than being able to be proactive about what's going on and be able to share information in a way that feels competent on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think it just comes back for me, um, if you could collectively discuss further and define some guidelines for what it is that needs to be shared and when versus what doesn't need to be shared, or what the person was, was suggesting. Cause there, the, the spectrum is from like the Truman Show, you, you watch every key stroke I do, which is not what you're asking to
Uh-huh, right, no.
Nothing, you know, so there's a big, right?
Right, and I-
Where are we going?
Yeah.
Do you wanna know when we're talking about, uh, you know, what sidewalks to replace potentially in the future? You know, just conversation we're having and back in the engineering office. Well, this might come up someday. We, we recognize there's an issue there. I mean, that's a very small, common, whatever thing. Um, at what point does it become something that needs to be shared?
Right, we'll be interested in-
How do I define that? Define that for me?
Go ahead.
Oh, your example about sidewalks, I think is useful because there are some things that just happen on a, on annual cycle. And so, if I knew that, say, I don't, I don't even know, in March or in April, you're thinking about what sidewalks are gonna need to be worked on this summer. You know, and it's just like, I mean, I can envision just like a, almost like a monthly calendar, like, we're gonna be, working on a parking plan in August. You're gonna be talking, thinking about sidewalks in March, you know, just, like, I don't, I wouldn't even need more detail than a couple of things. So that if I, it was something I cared about, then I could get involved.
Yeah, and I think you would be surprised at how, like, I think that they, the assumption is probably that, especially like me, like, I'll have questions about a lot of things. But I had no questions about the finance, I read the minutes, I was like, cool, that's great. So I think that you would be surprised about the number of things that just make sense, but like knowing that they're going on, if it is something like sidewalks. You know, I might say like, hey, for example, you know, this one street sidewalks in my ward are really crappy. Um, you know, and it hasn't been addressed for a few years, like, I'm just reminding you about Oak Street. I mean, which actually is fine and was just replaced, but, you know, like, whatever, like, it would just allow for more timely, cause that's the other thing, is like, I'm still gonna tell you about Oak Street, but it might not be timely. And what do you do with that information? Does that become sand?
For that example, someone said there's a pothole or there's a bad sidewalk somewhere, that's gonna be stored information, that's gonna inform a future project somewhere. It's not necessarily going to be, we, okay, we're gonna go replace that sidewalk next week, or,
Right.
Um, but it's, if that's gonna be saved somewhere, that's gonna be, it doesn't just get forgotten.
No, I know, but I guess my assertion would be that if it, if you were talking about sidewalks and I made my sidewalk comment, then that might be more in line with the, like, less sand in your cup.
Yeah, there's not a specific time of the year, we're talking, okay, we're talking about sidewalks, this, I mean, when it comes time to go to bid for something, but that, the list of, of what's being replaced has probably already been developed. So I think those types of things, I mean, infrastructure issues, any issue you notice. Share that when you notice it, or wanna share with you. Um, don't wait to be asked, I guess, I'm, that's what I'm at, just share.
Sure, 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 okay. Well, yeah, I mean, this is something that we've been trying to tackle for the entire time that I've been here and sometimes more earnestly than others. But I appreciate you guys being willing to have the conversation and continue to try to move us toward, um, just like this more seamless communications between us. Thank you.
All right, uh, I don't think we have any need for executive session. Yes, Jenny?
I know, I'm sorry.
What's?
I apologize, I, um, I should've shared this with Greg to announce that his administrative, um, report. Two things, the FTA is auditing the DOT, um- Two things, the FTA is auditing the DOT, um, so they will be here the week of June seventeenth to sort of what's going on with the transit program. So, DePoe Taylor and I will be involved, uh, probably Greg and Chris will be involved, uh, I think it's, uh, three days that they'll be here, um, to do an FTA audit. The second thing is, is that, uh, the state controls office is going to be here, and they haven't given us the date yet for a cybersecurity audit. And, um, so as soon as I get those dates, I will inform Greg. And again, um, I talked with the period at our IT people yesterday, and they have all of the tests already prepared. They already know basically what the state's going to be asking. And, uh, so Carrie and I and our IT people will be, um, involved in that audit. And I'm sorry, Doug, that I did not inform you to, to, to. We were talking about his report today, and I just totally forgot those two things. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny.
Uh, last thing, uh, the Oniana Creek Trail is looking amazing, um, if you're free, come check it out on Saturday morning at our opening at ten AM before you go celebrate Pride Fest. Uh, and if you're not free then, just go check it out, um, we built a bridge last weekend, there's miles of mood trails, it looks, it looks great.
Nice.
I'm excited.
And that's gonna be at the, the cer- the ceremony at the dam?
Yep, yep, and this is one of the speakers, right here.
Three and a half minutes written already.
Okay, well, you better cut it down to three. All right.
Just short. Just about the email that we got today.
So, we just need the council, right, so everybody else can go? You gotta make a motion.
Okay, I'm just gonna move really quickly, that we move into executive session to talk about, uh, contracts, collective bargaining, collective bargaining.
Okay.
Can we take a little break, you're very quickly, sit down.
Yeah, well, I got a motion, I gotta have a second.
Oh, uh, sure, but.
I got a second. Who do you want in there?
Uh, just Greg.
Just Greg, so everybody else can go.
Yeah, yeah.
You want Jenny?
Or, no. Greg, and you said the, um, legal counsel.
Just, just Greg?
Um, and I expect it to be very short, I just wanna get a firm which way we're going.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Okay, oh, you guys are the best.
All right, and we're going to executive session, boom.
Seven fifty-four.
You guys are starting at eight o'clock, what?
If you gotta take a potty break, take a potty break.